Today we're doing green up in Orland Manor. It's one of the projects we've been working on probably for about six or eight months. Today is the culmination of that, is engaging the community to get together and complete the project that we started years ago.
We're doing a lot of planning for the spring, a lot of great volunteers, both from the individual neighborhoods and people that are coming out to support our green up program.
Good afternoon, I'm Mayor Buddy Dyer and I'd like to welcome you to the May 9th, 2011 regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. Why don't we all silence our phones unless you happen to have the Gator Fight song as your ringtone and that will be okay. Otherwise, let's go ahead and silence those. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered today by Minister Winston Johnson of the "I Am That I Am" Church. Minister Johnson has served his congregation for 11 years and the ministry is located in the heart of Commissioner Linum's district in Pearmore. The church is involved in the community and provides food and clothing to people in need. The invocation will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance offered today by District 5 Commissioner Daisy Linum. Would everybody please stand? Pastor.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here. Father, oh maker of heaven and earth, as we gather in your glorious presence, make us worthy to stand before you. Lord, I pray also that in this meeting that you will give us guidance, give us commission guidance to make the sound decisions and we pray that you bless the city of Orlando and that you will continue to help us, Lord. Help us to understand your will. Father, oh maker of heaven, I pray that you will be with us, guide us, and instruct us and instruct this council in your presence and in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Diamond.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Linum.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now take up for consideration the minutes of the April 25th, 2011 workshop agenda review and city council meeting. Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheehan, already beat you Commissioner Ortiz. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, so the motion carries. The city attorney and I both are speakers at a memorial service later this afternoon, so with your approval, what I'd like to do is we'll go ahead and do the awards presentations and recognitions and I have three short comments, but if we could do commissioner comments after the consent agenda and after the ordinances, just in case we run short of time and I have to leave, if that's okay with you guys. Okay, so we'll move into awards presentations. Number one, Marcia is going to help us recognize leaders from our Asian American Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer and city commissioners. It is always a pleasure to introduce our city's recognition of the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month celebration in the city of Orlando. Today, we have a large group of our friends and representatives from various Asian American, Asian Pacific American organizations here with us. And mayor and commissioners, here to introduce the group that's here and also to make a special presentation is Kathy Lamas, who is the president of the Asian American Chamber of Commerce, one of our strongest partners in many of the activities that we do in the city of Orlando. And mayor, after Kathy makes her presentation, if you would read the proclamation and come down and take a photo.
Okay.
Kathy?
Thank you so much, Marcia. As president of the Asian American Chamber of Commerce, I would like to thank Mayor Buddy Dyer and the Orlando City Commissioners for this opportunity for the Asian American community to gather here for the proclamation of the month of May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Today, representatives from 20 Asian American organizations are here today to witness this very proud moment. Will the key representatives of these organizations please come forward as they are called? The Asian American Chamber of Commerce, the Chinese American Association of Central Florida, if you would please come over to the front of the... The Orlando Chinese Professionals Association, the Council of Filipino American Organizations, the Bayanihan International Ladies Association, the Filipino American Veterans Association, the Ilango Association, the Order of the Knights of Rizal and the Ladies of Rizal, the Central Florida Asian Youth Group, the Asian Indian Affinity Team under SunTrust Central Florida Diversity Council, the Asian Heritage Association of Lockheed Martin, Central Florida, the Indian American Chamber of Commerce, the Thai Association, the Bayanihan at Wedgefield, the Asian Pacific Women's Association, the Bisminda Lu's Association, the Filipino American Coalition, the National Federation of Filipino Associations, and the Asian Bar Association. Mayor and commissioners, I present a cross-section of the Asian American community in the city of Orlando. Thank you for this opportunity. The Asian American Heritage Council, thank you. Now, the Asian American Chamber of Commerce would also like to present, after this proclamation, the Diversity Champion Award given at our last Golden Dragon Awards to the city of Orlando for its outstanding contributions and positive impacts to our Central Florida community and for encouraging diversity and inclusion in the city beautiful. Thank you.
I have a proclamation from the city of Orlando, whereas the city of Orlando takes great pride in the diversity of people, cultures and traditions represented by its residents, and whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders represent approximately 4% of the population of greater Orlando, and whereas Orlando is enriched by the significant and lasting contributions of its residents of Asian and Pacific Island heritage, and Orlando recognizes their exceptional achievements and success in all aspects of society, including business, education, law, the arts and sciences, and whereas the Asian American Chamber of Central Florida, Chamber of Commerce of Central Florida, was established in Orlando in 1986 to provide leadership, support and encouragement to its members, whether individuals, small businesses or corporations, so they may prosper and grow, and whereas the Asian American Chamber, now in its 25th year, serves as a bridge between our diverse Asian American communities and the greater Orlando region and beyond, now therefore, I Buddy Dyer, mayor of the city of Orlando, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2011 as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in the city of Orlando and we'll be celebrating here at City Hall tomorrow. And today marks the start of National Travel and Tourism Week in America and we are proud to be the world's premier destination for visitors. Tourism is the backbone of our local economy and it creates hundreds of thousands of jobs and helps us fuel our superior quality of life and I think our goal this year is 50 million visitors, which will be a record mark. So coming back out of the down economy, it's certainly something to be said about the appeal that Orlando has both nationally and internationally. And today, we have some special guests to help us celebrate tourism. Rich Malidecki, the president of the Central Florida Hotel and Lodging Association, and Brian Martin, who is the Corporate Communications Director of Visit Florida. You guys are incredible partners. And we are honored to have you here and I have a proclamation for this as well. Whereas travel and tourism is one of America's largest industries, directly generating $118 billion in tax revenue for local, state and federal governments, and whereas travel is among the largest private sector employers in the United States, supporting 14 million jobs, and whereas the state of Florida's annual travel-generated spending equated to $71 billion with tax receipts of $10 billion, and whereas tourism in the state employs over 757,000 individuals with a payroll of $19 million, and whereas Central Florida is one of the world's premier tourist destinations for leisure and business travel with an estimated 49 million visitors in 2010 and more than 50 coming up this year, who spent $80, $28 billion locally, and whereas in the tri-county area, the tourism industry alone provides nearly 380,000 jobs comprising 31% of the total employment in Central Florida, and whereas the Central Florida Hotel and Lodging Association is the world's largest regional hotel association and represents approximately 80% of the hotel rooms in the tri-county area, and whereas Visit Florida is recognized as one of the premier destination marketing organizations in the world, representing 1,200 travel and tourism partners in Orange County. Now therefore, I Buddy Dyer, mayor of the city of Orlando, hereby do proclaim May 7th through the 15th, 2011 as National Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Orlando. Okay, and the last third presentation is the City of Orlando Annual Historic Preservation Awards, recognizing our historic resources and property owners who take an active role in preserving and protecting the integrity of the city's historic districts. And I'm going to call on Richard Forbes, who is our Historic Preservation Officer, who will take us through the program. Richard?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, mayor. Good afternoon, commissioners. May is National Preservation Month and the theme this year is celebrating America's treasures. Throughout our nation, communities are celebrating, and visiting, I might add, significant places that have contributed to our American experience. Orlando is very fortunate to have a great number of treasured historic resources that help tell the story of the history of our city and its people. Our annual Historic Preservation Awards Program recognizes the place that our historic resources have within our city beautiful and the hard work that goes into rehabilitating and preserving these resources so that they may be enjoyed today and for many generations to come. Our first award this year goes to 302 East Amelia Street, which is at the corner of Amelia and Highland and the Lake Eola Heights Historic District. The house is owned by Stephanie Conforti and J.R. Russo. The main house and garage were built in 1921 for L.M. Donnell at a cost of $3,000. There's an additional structure to the rear of this property that was built around 1924 and served first as the Highland Cash Grocery Store and then later as Donnell's Grocery Store. So we actually had additional local stores within that neighborhood. By the time Stephanie and J.R. acquired the property, the house had been used hard and cut up into apartments. The historic windows had been removed and there was a general air of disrepair. There was much work to be done. The homeowners first restored the old grocery into an apartment and lived in it while they worked on the main house. The project is recognized for the thoughtful rehabilitation of the home and the rejuvenated old garage and apartment. The garage, once the main house was completed, underwent a thorough renovation and restoration, which returned the garage space as a space for cars to the ground floor and then reworked the upstairs apartment. As you can see, the garage is now a useful and attractive feature of the property and of the neighborhood. So thank you to Stephanie and J.R. for their careful, hard work on a home that is certainly one of Orlando's historic treasures. Mayor Dyer and Commissioner Sheehan, would you come down and help me give this award out? And Stephanie and J.R., if you'd come up, we'll get a photo opportunity. Yes, that is the right one. to 646 East Livingston Street. This is the home of Carmine and Margaret Bonacci. This project was a combination of restoration of the main house, in addition to the main house, and the infill construction of a new detached garage with an apartment to the rear of the property. This house was built in 1917 for George Stanford at a cost of $2,000 and this is, of course, as well in the Lake Eola Heights Historic District. The restoration of the main house removed a number of inappropriate windows, doors and siding that had been added on to the house over the years. This resulted in a much more compatible enclosed front porch, which blends with the historic home. In the rear of the house, an addition was added and a dormer added to provide additional living space on the second floor. This additional space created a livable upstairs area where it was once a cramped attic. The original 1917 garage had been lost many years ago and the infill of a new garage with apartment above followed the historic pattern of development in the Lake Eola Heights neighborhood. The garage was built using wood windows, doors and siding that are compatible with the historic neighborhood. The end result is a new garage and structure and rehabilitated home that remains consistent with the historic homes in the Lake Eola Heights Historic District and we thank Carmine and Margaret Bonacci for their sensitive and careful renovations and additions to their historic home, which is, again, one of Orlando's historic treasures. Now we have one more award and it's a very special award. It's a special centennial award. Thank you to David and Diane Martins for their careful rehabilitation and stewardship of their home, which this year in 2011 turns 100 years old. Mayor Dyer, I'm going to turn the podium over to you for the reading of the proclamation.
Thank you, Richard. And before I read this, had the opportunity to join Commissioner Sheehan a few weeks ago on the Eola Heights Historic Neighborhood Tour. And I had never been on the garden tour before and there were 10 plus one houses, I think, on the tour and it was probably one of the most enjoyable Sunday afternoons that I have spent in a long time because you get to see people that have great pride in the restoration of many historic homes and probably most of the 100-year-old historic homes that we have are in that neighborhood. I know there are others around. Erby Pugh's house, I think, is actually the oldest one that we have in the city of Orlando, but it is a neighborhood that takes great pride in the historic preservation of the homes in the neighborhood and it is just a wonderful neighborhood and I plan to make that an annual event. So there was one special house that day, which was celebrating its 100th year anniversary from construction and we're honoring David and Diane Martins' home today. City of Orlando celebrates the 100th anniversary of David and Diane Martins' home located at 229 East Amelia Street in the Lake Eola Heights neighborhood, and whereas this two-story, four-square Colonial Revival Home was built in 1911 by contractor E. Kendall and has retained its historic integrity, and whereas since 1979, the Martins have gone to great lengths to restore their home, including the original stairway, woodwork, trim and floors which are made of hard of pine, and whereas in 1985, the Martins and a group of neighbors formed the Lake Eola Heights Historic Neighborhood Association to preserve the architecture and original character of the Lake Eola Heights neighborhood, and whereas the Martins have been strong advocates of historic preservation and partnered with the city to designate the neighborhood as the Lake Eola Heights Historic District in 1989 and to place it on the National Register of Historic Places in 1991, and whereas the city of Orlando recognizes the Martins for their commitment to historic preservation and their house turning 100 years old, now therefore, I Buddy Dyer, mayor of the city of Orlando, hereby do proclaim Monday, May 9th, 2011, as David and Diane Martins' Historic Centennial Home Day in the city of Orlando. And I'm going to call on Commissioner Sheehan, who's going to make this even a little more special than it already is. Commissioner Sheehan.
Well, as the mayor said, we did a proclamation for David and Diane and they actually got a proclamation for having their house on that tour as well, but we wanted to do something a little extra special because this is 100 years old. So we now have a new program in the city of Orlando called the Centennial Award and it looks like this. Now, it's not going to be made of styrofoam. We didn't get them done in time because we want to do something really special for you. These are being cast in bronze for you. It's going to go on every... We're going to do 10 a year of every historic home and centennial home. You have to apply for it, but 10 homes a year are going to have this special plaque on them from the city of Orlando and yours is the very first.
One last plug, we're coming up right now for our 2012 Historic Preservation Board Calendar Competition and I'm happy to say that the Lake Ivanhoe National Register Historic District, which was designated last year in December, is going to be the focus of our competition this year. The competition has been open for a month or so and it will close on July 15th. So those of you that are into photography and into historic buildings, get out there and take some great photos and I think we're going to have a really great 2012 calendar. Thank you.
So we'll move into the mayor's remarks and I'm going to keep them short since I was asking you guys to move yours to after general appearance. On Saturday, we're hosting our sixth annual mayor's neighborhood community summit from 7:30 to 2:00 at the Doubletree. You can still sign up, go to citoyoforlando.net. Cost is $10, which includes breakfast and lunch, so that's a pretty good deal and it's a very informative event. Last Monday, I joined Commissioner Diamond and our staff from Family Parks as we officially opened the second Orlando Disc... Well, this is the Orlando Disc Golf Club, but second Disc Golf opportunity that we have in Orlando and this one's at the Airport Lakes Park and I'm going to let Commissioner Diamond brief you a little more extensively on the amenities that we have down there. Last week, commissioners, you received a memo notifying you of leadership changes in several of our departments. Chief Demings announced her retirement from OPD and Alan Euler had previously announced his retirement from Public Works. Both of their retirements will be effective June 1st. So one thing that I'm very proud of and I have asked all of the directors to do is to plan for succession so that when we have retirements, we don't have to do national searches for directors and I think that we have a high-quality city staff and there's no reason that we shouldn't be able to train, educate and then promote from within. So I'm extremely proud that we're able to make three promotions of able people to lead their department. So I've appointed Deputy Chief Paul Rooney to serve as the 37th Police Chief, Rick Howard as the new Public Works Director, and I've promoted the Deputy Director of Economic Development, Brooke Bonnet, to fill that vacant position that occurred when Frank came over and became Chief of Staff. So they are all great. They have proven themselves, not in Albuquerque or somewhere like that, but right here in the city of Orlando. So it's also three of the largest departments, so I know that you know all of them and it's not one of those things where you have to get to know them. And that is on consent agenda today. And then the last thing that I will mention is that we were able to reopen Delaney Park where was what we thought was originally a sinkhole, but it turned out to be a cave-in of some type of underground vault that we didn't know was there and it caused significant damages to the concessions and bathrooms and interrupted the activities in the park, but we are very excited that we have got that restored and returned to usage and I'm sure Commissioner Diamond will have additional comments on that. So I will conclude my remarks there and move into the consent agenda. And what I would like, let's see, Commissioner Linum, you have an amendment on... Lyman, you have an amendment on--
And we're moving to new business?
So, I'm going to move that to new business, so we can take an amendment on that. And otherwise, if anybody wants to register a no vote on any of the items, let's see. Your turn to go first. Just let me know if there's any no votes, so we can have those before we vote. Commissioner Lyman?
No, we just have A-- what is it? A8?
We'll bring that out. Okay. Commissioner Ings?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Diamond?
No.
Commissioner Ortiz, Commissioner Stewart, and Commissioner Sheehan.
I'm good, no, thank you.
Okay. Then, less item A8 is a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ings. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. We're now on new business, and we'll take up item A8. And I assume it's the ticket policy, not the--
Actually, I never did see the other one. Yes, it's the ticket policy, page five.
Okay. Just so people know what we're looking at, that we are codifying the policy relating to the acceptance of tickets of all sorts for employees and elected officials of the city of Orlando. This comes to the forefront based on us wanting to make sure that we are in 100% compliance, not with our own policies, but with IRS rules and regs, so that if somebody has accepted a ticket, they do not, at some point in the future, if we have an IRS audit, be subject to having to pay out of their pocket if we have not handled the reporting of tickets correctly. And I think we've had this before us a couple times, but Commissioner Lyman has an amendment to one section.
Commissioner, if we're in agreement, if you would go to page five, item I, under Tickets Donated to Charity, you already will see that there was a change made trying to facilitate our engagement. But the further change reads, starting with the underscore, "When tickets otherwise available for use by a district commissioner are stracked, returned to the mayor's office for donation to charity, and insert 'Instead Donated to Charity,' that commissioner's signature will be included on the letter of acknowledgment affecting the donation." There's a comma, along with the mayor's. That is the extent of that amendment.
That change. Let's have a motion on the main item for A8. Let's get that before. So, I didn't do that before. I had you explain it. Is there a motion on the item?
I'll move approval of that.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Ortiz and Commissioner Lyman. Then Commissioner Lyman moves the amendment that she just discussed.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Sheehan on the amendment. Commissioner Lyman, could you just read that again?
Starting with the underscore.
Do you want me to read it as it's corrected?
Yes, thank you.
Just because I've got a cleaner copy, I think, than the one that you have. So, the--
The entire provision that's entitled Tickets Donated to Charity under subsection I would read, "Tickets the city has purchased, received from the charity sponsoring or benefiting from the event, or are supplied through a contractual arrangement, may be donated to a charity. In accordance with Internal Revenue Service regulations, only the mayor may donate tickets to charity on behalf of the city and avoid personal income tax liability." Then this is the sentence that we've changed. "When tickets otherwise available for use by a district commissioner are instead donated to charity, that commissioner's signature will be included on the letter or acknowledgment affecting the donation, along with that of the mayor." Commissioner Lyman, I think that is--
Yes, sir.
--the language that you and I reviewed.
Yes, excellent.
And in plain language, the city receives tickets, or we have our box, and district commissioners have opportunities to give those tickets to charity. And the IRS regs say that only the CEO of the city can actually do that. So, we're just making sure that we accommodate both the IRS regs and that the charitable organization that you have chose to benefit knows that it was your wishes that they get these tickets. So, I think--
Thank you very much.
--we've accomplished that. Okay. Let's see. We got the amendment before us. All in favor, the amendment indicate-- Commissioner Sheehan, did you have a comment?
And we did get that as an-- we did get that black-lined amendment, too. I appreciate that, Commissioner Lyman, because it's good to be able to see it in writing beforehand. So, and I did just share that with Commissioner Stewart. So, we did get that amended--
At the time, yes.
--policy beforehand. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I'm sorry. Didn't your light still on?
Yeah. What I got as a black line wasn't the same thing that Commissioner Lyman read. The only question I've got is for the city attorney, and that is, does this amendment have any way list us in risk with IRS regulations?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor of the amendment indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion on the amendment carries. All in favor of the policy as amended indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are now on hearings, ordinances, second reading, number one. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida establishing an initial zoning classification of ASD 2 in part, and rezoning to ASD 2 in part, for certain real property generally located at the southwest corner of the Narcoussi Road and State Road 528 interchange, and comprised of .871 acres, more or less, amending the city's official zoning map as initiated by the property owner, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move for approval. Motion by Commissioner Diamond, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this issue? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Let's go ahead and read number two. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida relating to signs, amending Chapter 64 Orlando City Code to establish Part 8 relating to downtown signage, creating downtown signage districts with special signage provisions, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances and actions, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Mayor, I'd like to ask that we defer this.
Okay. Go ahead. Let's make a motion, so that it's before us. Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Lyman. Commissioner Lyman moves that we defer the item until the June 6, 2011 Orlando City Council meeting. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Ordinance is first reading, number one. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida amending an ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida vacating, closing, and abandoning a portion of South Street between South Rosalind Avenue and South Magnolia Avenue by reducing the area of abandoned right-of-way, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Both you and Commissioner Lyman. Okay. Commissioner Diamond?
Thank you, Mayor. This affects First Methodist Church, where we are members. My wife is employed. So, to avoid the appearance of any conflict of interest, I'm going to abstain on this vote.
Okay. Madam Clerk, note, Commissioner Diamond as abstaining. All those in favor indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida designating certain land along Semeron Boulevard, generally from Brosh Road on the north to East Grant Street on the south, as within the Semeron Boulevard Special Plan Overlay District on the city's official zoning map series, and rezoning certain land within the district from R1A to O1 on the city's official zoning map series, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Show move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners.
Mayor.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yeah. Let's wait until we vote, and then I'll go and make the--
Okay. We'll have a second motion on when to hear the second reading. Commissioner Sheehan?
Well, I would just like to point out that while this is just one of those, you know, so-move second issues, I know that Commissioner Ortiz put a great deal of effort into this, and I want to commend him, because land use issues and making sure that you can redevelop an area in a really positive fashion is really what we're supposed to do. And I'm thrilled with this. And I've represented us on the Eastern of Florida Regional Planning Council for the last 10 years. And these are the kinds of things that make communities better. So, I just want to thank you, Commissioner Ortiz, for doing this. And I know it's going to make our city better.
Thank you, Commissioner. I really appreciate that.
Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Second reading of this ordinance will be on May the 23rd. And because the ordinance will change the zoning map designation on more than 10 acres of land, and the zoning change was not initiated by landowners, Florida requires that the city either hold a public hearing after 5:00 p.m. or to approve a motion to conduct the hearing at another time. Any motion to hold the hearing prior to 5:00 p.m. must be approved by a supermajority or five of seven. Therefore, I will take a motion to hold the public hearing for the second reading and adoption of the Semeron Boulevard Special Plan Overlay District and rezoning ordinance at our regular 2:00 hearing on May the 23rd. Is there such a motion?
Mayor, I make a move to hold a public hearing for the second reading and adoption of the Semeron Boulevard Special Plan Overlay District and rezoning ordinance at our regular 2:00 p.m. meeting on May 23.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, double second by Sheehan and Stewart. You can pick, Madam Clerk. Is-- well, actually, I don't think we need discussion on that motion. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. Well, that was pretty efficient. I have time to hear the Commissioner comments.
Excellent.
How about that? Okay. Commissioner Lyman, you're first up.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and thank you, Council, for approving for it with those amendments. Just two items. I hope everyone had a wonderful Mother's Day yesterday, a restful one, enjoyable one. So, congratulations to the mothers and the fathers who support them and their children. I want to take just a moment and say a special thanks to Walter and a number of people who went over to Callahan Center for Spruce Up. I was out in Georgia with my 93-year-old aunt. I think everybody knows, once a month, I go up there to take care of her affairs. But it was, as usual, Jane Rayhill. Then we had Green Up Orlando. We had the Downtown Clean Team. We had Family Parks and Recreation Division, Callahan Neighborhood Center and Association, all kinds of neighborhood services, and Credo Volunteers. I just want to say thank you. And I will try and get a letter to each of you in the very, very, very near future. And last council meeting, I fail to think Lila Allen, Paulette, and her staff in our OUC for a great town hall meeting, where we pulled together three neighborhoods to deal with a more in-depth weatherization program. That town hall meeting was superb. We have now moved forward with a number of already-approved families to get the roofs and other things done out of a grant. So, I just want to say a real special thanks to them and all the people at work to make sure that went forward. It was at Dr. Smith's, so a lot of people didn't know it was District 5. They thought we had left out District 6. But we know how to move to those neighborhoods that are nearer to Dr. Smith's center than to other centers. And thank you very much. I think that's about it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move to District 6. Commissioner Ings?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say happy birthday to Commissioner Lyman. Her birthday is tomorrow.
Should we sing it?
What can we say? No.
Sure. Lead it off, Commissioner Ings.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Commissioner Lyman.
Boy, that's a mouthful.
Happy birthday to you.
Spanish night.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It is great to be 65.
Billy, did you jot all that down?
Oh, it's going to make it.
And then also, I'd like to congratulate Chief Paul Rooney on his promotion, and also Brooke Bonnet on her promotion, and Rick Howard on your promotion. Then, obviously, Chief Val Demmings, thank you for all of the great service that you've done to the city of Orlando, as well as Alan Euler. I don't see Alan here, but congratulations to Alan on his retirement. And then also, on May 5, we had the 29th Annual Orange County Law Enforcement Memorial March. And that was held in front of the Orange County Courthouse, very well-attended, and supported by our local elected officials, as well as our community and police officers and their families. And then, I'd also like to congratulate Janice Rayhill, Green Up Manager, Family Parks and Recreation, and Jody Gustrie, Keep Orlando Beautiful Coordinator of Public Works, for the Calver Shores, Lake Fran, Keep Orlando Beautiful Cleanup Campaign that was sponsored during the time of Earth Day. And that was on Saturday, April 16. We had out there, 9:00 in the morning, actually before 9:00, 324 volunteers. We collected about 7.4 tons of litter and debris from Lake Fran and Raleigh Street, including 12 tires, five shopping carts, pile of roofing shingles, and all sorts of big and small pieces of litter. We planted 20 trees and cleared invasive grapevines, trimmed vegetation, cleaned up illegal dump site from Poppy Park fence line, painted park pavilions, picnic tables, drinking fountains, fence benches at Poppy Park, and remulched the play areas. Sharon Williams, thank you so very much for your support, pressure washed, and painted out the graffiti along the Metro West Bridge that leads up to Metro West Elementary School, as well as remove litter from the canal, remove weeds, and planted around Calver Shores neighborhood, signed, as well as painted it, and educated all volunteers on stormwater, trees, and recycling. This was really a great event, and they did a great job in organizing and putting that together. So, I want to say thanks to them and congratulations for doing such a great job for the city of Orlando. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move to District 1. Commissioner Diamond?
Thank you. Well, I would also like to wish all the mothers and grandmothers a Happy Mother's Day. I hope everybody had a great Mother's Day yesterday and enjoyed the beautiful weather. Also, I'll also congratulate Commissioner Lyman on her 39th birthday.
My 321st.
And wish you all the best. As the mayor mentioned, we had the opening of the Disc Golf Course at Airport Lakes Park last Monday. For those of you who have never seen a disc or a golf disc, this is a golf disc. It's actually an official Orlando golf disc that the Disc Golf Association had. And I wanted to thank them for all of their volunteer work. They were out there on weekends digging away and making the trails so that you could do the Disc Golf Course. And also, I wanted to thank the Parks and Rec staff. They recycled some old Disc Golf baskets that had been in use and then replaced at Bill Frederick Park. And it was a very cost-effective way to get a great feature down there at Airport Lakes, which, for those of you who don't know, is right off Frontage Road. It's not a very heavily-used park, although it really is a nice one. And there's boardwalk, there's soccer fields, playground, trails, and all sorts of good things, fishing, and a number of other things at the parks. I'd really encourage people to go check it out. And I know that the Disc Golf Course has already brought a lot of people over there, and hopefully it'll bring even more people over there in the days to come. And speaking of that park and Southport Park, I wanted to thank the employees from the Airport Hyatt, who went out and did volunteer work, painted picnic tables, and did other good things in those parks as part of their volunteer projects. And I want to thank them for making their community better. A couple of events and a couple of items on the agenda. May 3, I want to give a shout-out to Ron Blocker. The Holocaust Memorial Resource Center of Central Florida honored Ron Blocker. It was a nice event. And congratulations to him, and congratulations for all the good things that organization does. And then also, the Law Enforcement Memorial last Thursday night at the courthouse. That was a very nice ceremony. I want to thank everybody that was responsible for putting that on and helping us to remember and appreciate those who made the ultimate sacrifice to keep us safe. And I wanted to thank them. On the agenda, a couple of items I'll mention. First of all, I want to congratulate all the new appointees who are being approved today. And then also, thank Chief Demmings for all of her good work, and Alan Euler for all of his good work in working for the city and doing such a nice job for the city. Item B3, I just wanted to call out. It's not-- the city's not doing a whole lot here, but I did want to thank the Florida Department of Transportation for working on right-of-way acquisition on the portion of Narcoussi Road that runs between 436 and Leavisdale Boulevard. For those of you who have been following the Narcoussi Road story for years, the portion from the county line to the 417 is under construction. The portion-- from the county line to the 417 is under construction, the portion from the 417 to the 528 is done, the portion from the 528 to Lee Vista is soon to be done, and this is the next one. So thank you to the state for trying to grab the right-of-way that we need to acquire to expand the road there. Item B-8, which the mayor alluded to, is going to allow the Facilities Department to finish up its work at Delaney Park, and I think by now most people have heard about the collapse of the old vault underneath the ground over there, and apparently it was there in the 1930s, and nobody really knew about it, and thankfully it was not a sinkhole, and thanks to the good work of the staff that is being repaired, and at the same time, while everything is torn up, and it's a good time to do it, the fields are being renovated as well. So out of something, something like that, something good is happening. So thanks to everybody for making that happen. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move to District 2. Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, happy Mother's Day, belated, but happy Mother's Day. And Commissioner Linum, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Wouldn't you celebrate that one? See, on the 29th, I was present during the press conference of Avianca announcing their new non-stop service between Bogota and Orlando. That was a trip that I took last year. We went over there, met with officials and advocated for this service, so I'm very proud to say that that's something we brought to the city of Orlando. But the true, true architect of this big project, her name is Ms. Victoria Viki Haramilla from Goa, which we need to recognize, she did an splendid job. She's been working on this particular project for many years, and she did a wonderful job. So we have an economic impact of approximately $19.4 million, which is an occasion to celebrate. I want to thank the Dover State's community for having me and Mayor Dyer during their annual spring celebration. It was full of music, food, and great entertainment, great camaraderie, great job. Thank you, Mr. David Blackwood, and thank you, Ms. Sandy Webb, for your hospitality. We had a great time with the community and with the rest of the leaders over there. On the 29th of this month, a few days ago, we had the Central Florida Law Enforcement Memorial, I'm sorry, the 5th, what is this, May 5. It was an honor for me to be present during the service. It was very emotional, but as always every year, you know, it's a great time for us to remember those who have given their lives in a service of others. So I want to congratulate, once again, I know everybody has, and I want to do it in a special way, Ms. Brooke Bonnet, Mr. Richard Howard, and Chief Rooney on their promotions. Great leaders. At the same time, we are kind of sad to see our chief, Val Demings, leave, because, you know, it's kind of funny the way we embrace somebody and we just don't want to let them go. And I know the other day, while we were celebrating a relay for life, people were coming to her saying, "I can't believe you're doing that to us." But I'm happy for you, and I'm happy also for Alan Euler. I wish you good luck in your endeavors. And last, but certainly not least, the first Donald Jackson Middle School Relay for Life to benefit the American Cancer Society took place this past Friday and Saturday. I, once again, thank you, Chief Val Demings, you were there for, with us, and we went around a couple of laps to start the relay. Hats off to Principal Eddie Ruiz, and Ms. Barbara Lopez, and Mr. Eddie Figueroa, Mr. Renee Placencia, and everyone else involved in the planning and execution of this great event. I'll be there again next year, God willing. Thank you so much, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Will move to District 3. Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor. And let me also add my congratulations to Brooks and Paul and Rick. I appreciate so much your service to our community, and Mayor, I agree with you, we have great people in our city, and it just doesn't make sense sometimes to look at a national search when, when the people that can do the best job are right under our nose, and I appreciate that opportunity. And Chief, you deserve a great deal of credit. Not only have you served our city in a wonderful way, you have also positioned our city in such a way that great people can follow behind you. That is the mark of a great leader, and I appreciate that, appreciate our friendship. I'll get a chance to say some nicer things about you later on, but I so much appreciate our friendship. Just a couple of quick things I'd like to mention, and that is, the Orwin Manor Greenup, Mayor, thank you for coming over. He left Carver and then came over to Orwin Manor, and we had a good morning that morning to work over there, had about 25 people from the Orwin Manor work on the fountain in the park over there. I appreciate so much the work of our Parks and Recreation Department. They have made this, what was going to be really challenging, make it just a very smooth transition with our community and working together with them. Also, we had a Rosemont Greenup the same time, or they had it done probably this past weekend, and Jan Rayhill, we've mentioned her name several times, she just does a great job for the city, and I appreciate so much her willingness to be out there and to be part and to lead these volunteers. I have not found a volunteer yet who has done something bad about Jan Rayhill and the work that she's done. She's just been tremendous, and I am so honored to work with her. I mentioned a couple of other things, but the last thing I'll close with is that the Edgewater High School had their inaugural Hall of Fame. We have put together, the community has put together a Hall of Fame for those who graduated or involved in, or involved in Edgewater High School. We fashioned it after the Boone event, that Boone has done this a while back, and we put in 12 inaugural members. So excited about that. Some great, some great people over there, and I won't go through the list except to mention, you've got some of the founders of the Orlando Magic, as well as some people who have just had an incredible influence on our community that are silent heroes. And so I was honored to be there, and since to share that with the mayor, but it's just a real special time to see our community come together. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Will move to District 4. Commissioner Sheehan?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo wishing Commissioner Linum a happy birthday, and since she started counting backwards several years ago, I do believe she's younger than me now, so happy birthday, Daisy. Also, happy Mother's Day for my mother. We took the screaming children to the beach so she could have a quiet day to herself, so I hope she enjoy herself. That's what she wanted. So I've got a 10-year-old and a 12-year-old nephew, and they are a handful, so yeah, we took the screaming kids away for her. Congratulations, Chief Rooney, Rick Howard, Brooke Bonnet. I know it's been, you know, it's a drag going last, but I echo my colleagues, you know, congratulations to you, and Chief Demings, 40% reduction in violent crime in your tenure. What an amazing job you have done, and I'm sure we have not seen the last of you. So I hope you run for public service, because we need great people doing, in our line of work. That's just a plug, anyway, so. That's just my two cents worth. On the agenda today, on A-8, on the ticket policy, I'd just like to point out that we've always paid taxes on our skyboxes and tickets that we've received, so I don't know why folks make a big deal about it, because we actually have to count that as income and always have had to, so I'm glad to see that codified, you know, so everybody can see it in black and white. On item B-10, the summer food program, I'm delighted to see that we're going to continue that, those past $3 to make sure children get fed during the summer months that are on the free reduced lunch program at school. On item C-2, I have an industrial to medical redevelopment on Kaylee. I'm sure we're going to be seeing a lot more of that in the future, which I'm delighted with. And I'd like to recognize two special people that are in the audience today from the Central Florida Leadership Academy. Will you please stand up for me? I know y'all are here. And I'm very, very proud of the Central Florida Leadership Academy. It's a character-based charter school located in District 4. It's a wonderful place, and I know that y'all are great students and learning a lot, and I'd like to thank Jody Litchford for her leadership in establishing the Central Florida Leadership Council, and I'm very, very proud of y'all for being here today. Could y'all give them a hand, please?
General appearances?
No.
Okay, we don't have any general appearances, so I'll just close by complimenting Commissioner Sheehan on that new hairdo. I like that very much.
I knew there was something different.
Very good.
I thought she started counting backwards, too.
With no further business, we'll be adjourned.
All right.
Looks a little blonder, Commissioner.
What's that?
Looks a little blonder today.